We're ready?
Yep.
Okay, I'm Steve Gaines. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. This is our February 1st Rankin County Board of Supervisors meeting. And I'm gonna start off, call it to order, and ask Craig Slay if he would pray for us.
Can I say something just before you pray?
In fact, you could pray for us, too.
I'll let him do it, but I don't mind praying in awe, because I'm used to doing it. We got John Judge Shirley placed yesterday, day before yesterday, in the nursing home, Wood Creek Nursing Home. Got him out of rehab where he was. They've got his meds. Seems like they work, you know, a lot better. He's not as vocal as he was, but he is not in good shape. And that's where more than likely he will spend the rest of his life.
Oh, wow.
So I just wanted to let everybody know that and keep his wife and him in y'all's prayers, if you would.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark.
Poor God, we coming for you now. And we acknowledge, Lord, that we've heard some distressing news about a public servant, a friend of ours, Lord, and a family that's in need. So, Father, our prayer is today that you would be that great physician healer. Father, that you would step forward in only the way that you can and provide peace in the midst of a circumstance, Lord, that is just not good. Father, we pray that that peace would extend to those around him, provide him care. I pray, Father, that he will feel the presence, the powerful presence of the Holy Spirit in his life, that he will be at peace. I pray for his family, Lord. Help them to stand up under the pressure and give them the strength that they need to minister and to be a good example for those around them. Thank you for this place, Lord, that we call home, that has caregivers, that has those who are professionals, Lord, who understand these situations and can provide the care that's required. Thank you, Lord, for letting them be your hands and your feet in tough circumstances. Father, I pray for these men, that the wisdom that they need will be given to them freely. Help them, Lord, to acknowledge humbly their need for your wisdom and your discernment today and help us to do a good job representing the interests of everybody in our county in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Normally, we go into our planning commission, but we have some guests today that do not have anything to do with the planning commission. And I would like to address this like a public hearing type thing. So, we're gonna go in directly into the Board of Supervisors meeting. So this is called to order. And I guess the first one on here is Honorable Judge Steve Ratcliffe.
If it's okay, I'm gonna get the rest of the judges.
Sure.
Absolutely.
You know, usually, we're on that side, so this is a little different. And before we even get started, I want to say this, too. And this is coming from all of us. We appreciate you guys because you've always supported the judiciary and the justice system in Rankin County. It's been, it's very obvious. Most of, most all of us have practiced all over the state. And this is a very unique county to, as far as the support that we get. And we really appreciate that. I've been contacted on several occasions over the years by Craig Slay saying literally, what can we do, what do you want? And that is a, that's something that we take in the heart. We really, we really appreciate that. But what we're here on today is our public defender system. As y'all know, by statute, the Board of Supervisors determines whether we have a public defender system set up in the county. If we don't, what we do, what the judges do is we have to appoint private lawyers to come in. They bill, we submit the bill, and that type of thing. You decided years ago, no, we want public defenders. You've funded that system for a number of years, and it's been much appreciated. We have a great public defender system. We've got some really good attorneys that do that. What we are here today is to ask for an increase in their, in their pay. I'm not exactly sure, because we've gotten some different responses to exactly how much they make right now. But it is considerably less, the one, what we, what we have seen considerably less than the majority of the counties that are about our size. We have about 100 and, Craig, correct me if I'm wrong on this. I think we've got about 165,000 people in Rankin County.
We say 107.
107, okay. I like the 107 mark, anyway. So what we did was myself, Judge Arthur, Judge Mills, Judge Morrow, Judge Roberts, all of us got together and said, hey, look, let's look around and let's see what other ones are making. We have a number of those right now. Judge Mills has got the majority of them. They can tell you, we went from Hancock, Harrison County, DeSoto County, Grenada County. We did about seven or eight different counties to see about what the average was. I can tell this board what that average is, or at least what they, what they are making. I've got a copy of some of those orders that some of the judges sent me. And once again, it's probably, some of them are, some of them are up to $20,000 and $30,000 a year more with less people in the county than we have. So in order to keep a good public defender system, we feel like they need, they need a raise. Simple as that. We've got Judge Morrow here as our county court judge. Obviously, Judge Morrow handles a tremendous amount of initial appearances for us. He has, Judge, I don't want to step on your toes. You can tell them what you, what you do mostly.
Well, I'll just tell you, you go right straight to the bottom line. You're gonna spend money to save money. Because with a good public defender, and I have one in my courtroom that's paired with a district attorney's office. And those two people, if they're the right match, go into the jail. We talk about people who've been arrested. We can get people out of that jail quicker and either get them on MDOC's check or either get them out for having, for time served to get them off your, your money that you're spending. And that's a way more efficient way, plus the liability exposure is less, because we're getting people out of the jail. The sheriff's office does a great job of working with that. We have a great system. I would think probably in January, I'd want to, and it was a partial month, maybe six or seven, six or seven guilty pleas out of the jail, which at $2,500 a month immediately saves you $12,000, $15,000 plus. If that, if they did plead guilty now, they might be there for another 60, 90 days. That's another $2,500 a month for each one of those people. So we, we're saving, we're gonna save money at the end of the day. But we can't save money until we spend it on the front end with a good public defender. Not just any public defender, but a good public defender. And that's, that's the key here for me.
Y'all probably know, I've had the job. I was a public defender in circuit court for 10 years, justice court for three years. I was on CJA panel, chanced overflow for the federal court for eight years. Most importantly, for the circuit court, for the 10. By state statute, you've got two guns of offices, either part-time or full-time. The part-time allows the part-time public defenders to have a private practice. If you're full-time, you have to fully fund them. They have to make, think what the county attorney does if they're full-time. Part, there's, there's nothing a part-time about the job, though. It's a minimal 25 hours a week, okay? If you've got to try a case, you're talking 40 hours a week. Before I quit in 2017, I was working about 65 hours a week between the two of them. Let me give you some numbers. Lafayette County pays $52,000 plus benefits. Madison County is $54,349 plus benefits. DeSoto County, $73,844. Plus benefits. We have a municipality here, Flowood, paying $30,000 a year for misdemeanors, okay? I've looked at, at, well, yeah, but we're talking misdemeanors, okay? Our, our part, our public defender should just handle felonies. Case load wise, I pulled them this morning. This is what is assigned to the public defenders right now for 2024. Abram Sellers has got 92 cases. He's got 18 cases set for the term of March between myself and Judge Arthur. That's 18 felonies. Everybody's got about 15 to 18 set in March. Most private attorneys don't get 18 cases a year, okay? Felony cases, all right? They're handling 18 in a six-week term. It's a full-time job. It's $40,000. I left in 2017 because I wasn't paying enough money. They asked me to come back multiple times. I come back and I didn't get paid enough money. I was losing money. We don't give them anything for expenses, okay? The law says you have to give your client a copy of discovery, okay? I was averaging about 150 pages of discovery per client. I have to give them a copy. I've gotta give them one myself. My cost was about 20 cents, all right? I don't get any reimbursement for that. That was running me about $500, $750 a month out of my pocket that I wouldn't even pay back for. And the law required me to do it. I was getting paid way more in federal court. These, the, the public defenders we've got now, I don't think they realized what, what they're being paid for a case. When I left in 17, it was about $300 a case. I was charging $300 an hour in my private practice. If I've got 40 hours in a case, and believing you can have it, you average at the minimal four hours per case. By the time you go to court, meet with the client, go discover, that's a minimal. You got to try a case, it could be 40 hours. Do the math on that. You're losing money. It's minimum wage is what it boils down to. Not only that, they use their offices, their secretaries, they don't get paid through their private practice. I don't know that you could have this job if you don't have a private practice, because you've gotta have your own office, you gotta have your own staff and assistant. And $45,000 a year just didn't cut it. We can't, I can't get competitive people to come in and do the job.
I thought we paid 50. I thought we were at 50.
I got the number, I met with the payroll lady here the other day. She gave me $45,000 as the adorable public defender. Mr. Sellers makes a little bit more because he's the chief public defender. We also have the, what we call special public defender that handles drug courts, arraignments. They make a little bit more because they got drug court. They're also running back and forth to Madison County because it's a combined drug court, okay? So they get a little bit more.
What is, what would you think would be a fair cost that we should look at? And, and how many, how many we, I don't even know how many we have. Two plus one?
Well, we've got, we've got six.
Six total?
Six total. Oh, wait, no, so that's seven total. We've got six to handle a case load. The seventh, the other one handles arraignments, initial appearances, drug courts, revocations, chancery, does commitments over in chancery. And it's, it's really time consuming.
Seven, part-time.
We have seven spots.
Seven spots, total.
All right, seven, one of them's at juvenile, right?
No.
No. What about justice court?
That's separate from us.
That's separate from y'all?
Yeah, that's separate from us, right. Yeah, for the county, I'm not sure how many you, I know you've got one in justice court. I don't know how many is at youth court, but seven in circuit.
I was thinking, I was thinking about justice court.
Right.
Okay.
As far as fair amount goes, at a minimal, what they're making in Madison. And you gotta understand that Madison's caseload is about half of what Rankin County is. And they're making basically $10,000 more a year for half the work. When I first took the bench, I was like, shoot, I should have been a public defender in Madison years ago. I mean, that's, you know, way less. I, I think 60 is a fair number based on what they're getting. But at a minimal, what they're making in Madison County. We don't need just lawyers. We need competent lawyers. We need people that got experience, can try cases, that can move the docket. If we can't move the docket, it's costing y'all money, all right? And we're not getting anywhere if we're not moving the docket. I can't find anybody right now, we've got an open spot, with any credible experience that'll do it. Everybody I've talked to has said, not for the money, not for the money. I have said this, and I mean it. The best thing I ever did in my career was be a public defender in circuit court. I learned so much. I've tried more cases in 10 years than most lawyers I know that have done it in 30 years. My biggest regret is not leaving earlier because I realized the amount of money that I lost.
Yeah, and you probably wouldn't have been a judge then.
I made that. I lost a little money taking this job. You want, we won't talk about it. Private practice was a little more lucrative. But we've got, we've got to get more money. We've, y'all've gotta get some money where we can get some people in there. I've got people now, they could go Grenada County and get $60,000 for a tenth of the volume of cases that they've got right now. It's worth that drive. It's worth the drive, you know? I mean, you may, you know, pay a mileage. We, we gotta keep them. We go into other counties, we gotta get them some money.
All the judges, all of y'all have the same feeling on this?
Well, I have a different, I have a, I'm here on, I, I, I'm advocating on behalf of a pay raise, but I'm also advocating on a little bit more than just a pay raise, too. And I believe that's why Judge Ratcliffe asked me to come. And I don't mean to speak out of turn, and I don't take credit for this idea. This is Judge Odom's and our kind of combined thoughts together, but, and, and just so that I can, if you need to establish a little context. On the civil side, we've never until recently, outside of mental health commitments, had to appoint a lawyer for someone on the civil side like you have to do on the criminal side, okay? However, over the last five years, the legislature and the appellate courts have said in situations on drug and alcohol commitments and in situations where a defendant is indigent and incarcerated in termination of parental rights cases, that we must, on the civil side, appoint a lawyer. We came back to this board two or three years ago and, and said that it would be financially beneficial to the county if we just borrowed a public defender rather than every time Judge Corrigan, Judge Odom and myself had to appoint a lawyer for these defendants. It would save money in the long run. I still believe that today. One of the problems now, our alcohol and drug commitments are flowing smoothly with representation from the public defender offices, been doing no issues. The problem that Odom and I have, and he can certainly speak on this if, if he's got a different take on it, but I think we're on the same page, is that in the termination of parental rights cases, and unlike in the criminal realm, the public defender who is representing these defendants, they're not always here in Rankin County. In fact, they're not usually in Rankin County. I've had this past year, one in the Lee County Correctional Facility, Winston County Correctional Facility, Green County Correctional Facility. And what has happened is our previous public defender would send us an order for MDOC to transport. They would maybe transport them to Rankin County earlier, they'd stay till court, or they may just bring them that day. The lawyer comes in, meets with the defendant, and within five or 10 minutes, I'm presented a document where the defendant has terminated their parental rights voluntarily. Now, that may be what they ultimately really want to do, but the optics of it look horrible. What really needs to happen is the moment we appoint someone in the case, that lawyer needs to go see them in the facility that they are in and meet with them and let them all over think about whether or not they want to contest this hearing or agree to it. And it's gonna save money, because if they agree to it, we don't have to have them transported to court. So I am advocating that we reimburse reasonable expenses for these public defenders that have to incur costs such as travel, mileage, meals if they've got to go, certainly copy fees, those types of things because of what's required they've gotta give because it is causing me very much heartburn and pause in my spirit when I am presented with a document terminating one's parental rights after only meeting with the lawyer for just a few minutes. And it happens quite often. Judge Odom and I spoke perhaps in 2023 between the three places in chancery court. We've probably had a dozen cases in 2023 where we need the defender to go travel to a facility outside of the confines of Rankin County. So I am asking that you all consider, in addition to a raise, that these public defenders be reimbursed for their reasonable expenses such as mileage, meals, and copies, any incidental expenses that they may incur traveling to those facilities. And I am willing to enter whatever orders need to be entered on the chancery side to cover you all if necessary, ordering you all. I am never, I say this, we're on record, not gonna send an order over here without learn, learn that, learn that's not the proper way by just sending orders over here. And I've watched that happen before. I'm always gonna come talk to you about it.
Unfounded madness.
That's it. But if you need an order, I will sign it to cover those reasonable, ordering the county to pay those reasonable expenses, absolutely. So I would hope that you could consider that within the budget. Judge Odom, you got any additional, he's a lot more eloquent and smarter than I am.
I agree.
So thank, thank you for your time.
I appreciate you.
I sort of wanna echo to a, a sentiment that Judge Ratcliffe made. We, we could, we could have decided not to come publicly and do all this, y'all. We could have met with, with Craig and Keith, and we could have talked with you all.
I'm glad you did.
Well, and I too, and this is why, because we don't, we don't get an opportunity to thank you all for what you do as well. Y'all have always supported us. We don't ever have any issues. And all the lawyers unequivocally come in our courthouse and they say, thank God I'm in Rankin County. You guys, it's amazing that y'all all talk together, you all know each other, y'all have each other's cell phone numbers. If Judge Ratcliffe calls me and I'm on the bench, I step down and take it. If I call him, he step me, we just all, even though we don't see eye to eye on every single issue, we all get along for the benefit of the county, and that includes you all as well. And we don't get the opportunity as judges to come out on a platform and say, thank you, or we need, or. And so I think it was important to come publicly today on the record to say, thank you, and we need. And I hope by our unity here today, you understand how dragged we are in the situation. So, thank y'all.
Appreciate y'all coming. Thank you. And you know, we get asked questions of why you did this, and don't we pay them enough, and na, 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 na. Well, if they're interested, they can see, they can hear for themselves.
I'm gonna say this real quick, too, and, and Abram's here with us. And those of you that don't know Abram Sellers, Abram is our chief public defender. And he's our chief public defender for the reasons. Matter of fact, we've been, we, we didn't think he would take the job. And the reason why is because his practice is, is very, very big, it's good. It's, I'm sure it's profitable, let me put it that way. But he has told us, he came to us, he wants to help people. That's his, that's what he likes to do. I will tell you this, and this is not just to prop him up. I'd put any criminal defense attorney up against him, he'd act. I mean, there's, there's none.
Put your phone number.
I'll say this, you don't want my number.
When friends and family ask me for, for an attorney, I send them to Sellers. And they come back and they say, he's a public defender. And my response is, he has won more cases than any other attorney I've had.
We're almost as good as I was.
We, we came up together as public defenders.
We have had a problem obtaining good public defenders. I know Mr. Slay was aware. One situation we had, in order for us to obtain good public defenders, we have to be able to pay at least equivalent with Madison County. And, and I love telling people, Rankin County Justice System, invest.
Well, yeah.
I, I love telling people that. And then when my friend who's a public defender in Choctaw County looks at me and says, yeah, but I make more money than your public defenders. I, I have this moment where I go, ooh, that hurts. I mean, I feel like we're better than Choctaw County. I feel like we're better than Winston County. And, and all we're asking for is y'all, is to pay at least be on pair with the sister county, Madison.
And, and the reason why we use that is because we're at the 20th Circuit, with the 20th District. And so that's our district attorney's office, of course, represents, you know, is in both counties. The judges are in both counties. Public defenders are not in both counties, but they do talk and that type of thing. And they, like you said before, our public defenders here in Rankin County have a better case load than they just did.
What's, what's his title?
He's the head of the state public defender office. That Rankin County has the best public defender for in the state. And I, I practice all over the state, and I get to go see these other public defender offices, these other counties. And I'll put myself aside, the group of lawyers that I work with as public defenders, I believe they are the best in the state. I mean, they can move our cases, they can try cases, they go around the state trying cases, so.
Well, they don't have to be really good, now.
Good.
I'm playing, that's a joke.
Judge, Judge Morrow. The more, the good lawyers make us more efficient. When we're more efficient, we save you money.
Quick, quick, court, evidence, everything goes.
When we're inefficient, we're costing you money. That's the bottom line.
And I'll be frank, I knew we had a problem in the past. When the first issue on appeal is ineffective assistance and counsel, it gives, it gives me a pause. With our current public defender court, the people we currently have, that issue never gets raised. It's never an issue on appeal, ineffective assistance. Our reversal rate is minuscule. It, it's the lowest in the state. And the Supreme Court has said publicly, Rankin County and Madison County tries more cases than anybody in the state, and we have the lowest reversal rate.
Which saves a lot of money, that's money that we don't think about if it comes back.
Again.
Having to pay.
I can tell you this, when I was PE, I would get numerous calls about somebody in jail that had cancer or came in with a dialysis, it was costing the county a fortune. Technically, we didn't have to take cases until we were assigned. But I never told the sheriff, Ronnie Andrews, when he was running the jail, I never told him to drop what I was doing and go over there, see him, get him moved through the system. Somebody over there on dialysis cost, got $10,000 a day or a week, whatever it is. And they could sit over there for months.
Yep.
And we'd get him moved through, put him back on the state dime, get him out, whatever. And they still do that today. What we call a special public defender, he's got his manly truck in jail cleaned out like that. But the others step in, do it all the time, because he, he can only do some much.
Y'all got anything you need to ask?
Judge Morrow, you, you had said six public defenders, one drug court. And then two at the youth, I'm trying to get my numbers right.
I, I have a federal grant, I did the drug court.
Okay.
And I paid the drug court public defender out of the federal grant. That, 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 those funds aren't from y'all. I, I use the federal grants to pay those funds, okay? It allows me to pay those funds. So that's not something that the county should have to pick up, even though statistically, we have to have.
We're talking about seven right now. We have six spots filled.
And then justice.
We just hired one this past week. We had two open spots. We just hired one this past week, and we're looking for the, for the seventh one right now.
The two that justice has, they don't overlap?
No.
They're two separate?
And, and we're not even talking about youth court. There are two part-time public defenders in youth court who do the same thing, but their load is all children. Families are children. So they have the same problem the rest of these guys have. But, so we got six regular and working circuit. We have a seventh that does a little carryover, which is a lot of mine, a lot of chancery, those type of things. Then you got two in youth court, and then whatever justice court you got. One in justice court.
So we're looking at a million dollars a year? And I, I'm.
They're currently making $48,000.
But I'm saying, if we go up.
You're looking at seven that make 54 or 5, something like that. I can, I can give you the exact number, plus benefits.
We just.
Right, I understand, but, but if the, if the, if the request is met, let me put it that way. Because if, if we match.
We're not paying benefits on these cows, obviously.
Yes, we are.
We are, okay.
Benefits and perks.
So.
And so, so it's Madison.
So y'all just remember us when it gets budget time, so that, you know, whenever we have to make moves to help support our county, we definitely want y'all to be there to help support us.
I don't know what he's talking about, but I agree. All right, we will work, I'll do everything I can to make this champion. We are only as good as y'all are. I don't care where you're at in Rankin County. You guys are the reason that Rankin County is great. And I'm serious about that. When we lose the type men, leaders in our judgeships, it all starts falling apart. Thank y'all. I promise you, I'm gonna do everything I can to help.
Thank you.
Appreciate y'all coming in.
We need recess now?
All right, I don't know.
Do we recess now during our planning commission?
Do we need to recess out of this and go back in, I mean, go in?
That, that would be a terrible way to do it, yes, sir. We recess back out of wherever we need to go to planning.
All right, do I have a motion?
I like the motion to recess, go to planning.
Okay, Brad makes a motion to recess out of this meeting and go into the planning. And Jay seconds that motion. Any other discussion? Uh, any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. Now we are into our planning commission meeting that's, uh, set for February first. I'm gonna call that to order. I have a motion to approve the minutes from December fifteenth.
I make a motion to approve minutes from the fifteenth.
All right, Sid makes a motion to approve the minutes. Do we have a second? I'm sorry, Brad.
Second.
All right.
That's our president.
Uh, Jay seconds that. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Now, old business, do we have, uh, we have one item here that?
Okay, so the old business, I don't know, would y'all like to review that? If not, the only thing I'll say is that we need to change that hearing date to April first. Uh, we're gonna have two on April first and that will allow us to get our new amendments in place. And so, uh, I have heard, uh, that same application in the set public hearings under section five. That'll just tell you why.
So what is this?
All right.
Those are the short-term bills.
Oh, okay. All right, gotcha.
Falls under CMPD stuff that is gonna be updated and anyhow. Um, so we're gonna.
We don't need action on that.
I don't even, do we need to table it or is any?
No, it's just a tip.
Okay, it's, oh, okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, new considerations.
Okay, the first, um, new consideration is a conditional use permit for Doyle Thrash at four fifty-seven Highway four sixty-nine north. Mr. Thrash is proposing to mine four acres of, uh, this fifteen point three-six acre tract. Uh, he's proposing to enlarge his existing pond on the property. Uh, the property is owned RE one A. Uh, this is an aerial view. Access to the, um, mine will be on the existing driveway. He estimates the mining operation will end in one year. Uh, this is his site plan. It shows the area to be mined outlined in red. He's proposing hours of operation as Monday through Friday, seven AM to four PM, Saturday, seven AM to noon, and no mining on Sunday. These are views of that property.
All right, um.
Did it say four acres or fifteen acres?
Four.
Four acres of a fifteen point three-six acre parcel. These are, uh, homes that are on that property. And.
At this point, we're looking at, do we want to set it?
We just do a review.
We're reviewing it right now and then later, so we really don't, I mean, here, we don't have to do anything. We're just, okay?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay. All right, let's move on to the next one. Buddy.
That's it. You got it.
Okay.
All right, so the next, uh, application is for Caitlin Dickens. It's a conditional use permit at one forty-three Little Woods Road. Uh, she's seeking the conditional use to place a twenty twenty-three fifteen by seventy-six manufactured home on the property. It's a two-acre parcel of family land. Her husband's parents have an existing home on the property. And if she's approved, an acre will be divided out for the manufactured home. Uh, this property is owned RE one. She's applying under the hardship section. Her husband's grandparents are elderly and need someone to help with daily care and maintenance of the property. That's an aerial view of the property. And this is her site plan showing the placement of the home and the distance to property lines, uh, for an acre lot. These are views of the property. This is her husband's parents' home.
Parents or grandparents?
Parents. Now, her grandparents, yeah, so the grandparents, these are, uh, family members too. I'm not sure which one's the grandparents.
That's the grandparents.
Okay. And then this is another family member. I'm not sure if anybody's here today, if y'all have any questions.
So how many acres is?
Well, so the grandparents have, uh, a good bit of acres, like maybe twenty acres. And then, uh, the son of the grandparents, you know, their son, he has two acres. He's gonna divide out an acre for his child.
Out of his two.
Out of his two.
So.
And now the mobile home is temporary. I'm sorry, before I forget, it's temporary because when assistance is no longer needed, they're gonna remove it.
Okay.
It's gonna go away.
So, so it's not a real big issue then?
No.
Um.
They, they gets, all that, they're taken care of. I've been out there, but when grandparents are elderly and. When they pass away, they, uh, they're leaving the house to their grandchildren. So at that time, they'll move into the house, uh, and the trailer should leave.
Gotcha.
The, yep.
Renee, do we know the main model on the proposed trailer?
Yep, it's new, I think, a fifteen by seventy-six. Um, let me see. Twenty twenty-three fifteen by seventy-six.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
It's a modular home.
All right.
All right, let's move on.
All right, uh, next is a rezoning request for Dylan Walker on Henry Cannon Road. He's seeking to rezone fifty-four acres on Henry Cannon Road from A two to RE one A. That's a view of that property. He's proposing a four-lot development. RE one A allows minor subdividing with no more than four lots. That's the aerial view. And then this is his, uh, site plan showing the lot layout. The smallest lot contains six acres. All of the lots have adequate frontage on the public road. Uh, restrictive covenants are proposed as eighteen hundred square feet, uh, for a minimum heated and cooled area. And that there would be, he would prohibit any further subdividing without board approval. These are views of that property.
That's a nice road.
Yeah.
And then this is a surrounding.
Chip too.
Yes, drive and everything, very nice.
Mr. Renee, the covenants prohibited manufactured houses, do we have that in there?
No, because it's RE one A. He's seeking to go to RE one A, which would allow him as a conditional use permit.
So long as y'all understand, if they wouldn't be prohibited through covenants, they are allowed in our zoning as a conditional use. So they would have to apply for a conditional use to, to move the manufacturer home in there. So if that's an issue.
Where's this, give me.
Henry Cannon, what's it offering for?
It's all for Levi Cooper.
It's very rural.
Looked at. Bet it's at the very end of Levi Cooper. Y'all couldn't win it in the back when y'all went by that part.
Not too far from Star.
Yeah, I mean, ain't far. I'm signing. Henry Cannon, Levi Cooper to forty-nine. Just by the rules you can get Rankin County.
You got any question, Brad?
No.
It's Brad.
Hmm?
You good?
Yep.
All right.
All right, the last item is a conditional use permit for Pam Jeffries at three seventy-one Lakeway Drive. Ms. Jeffries is seeking the conditional use permit to operate a short-term rental on this property. It's a one point three oh acre parcel. It's owned RE one. Uh, her application states that she will remain in the home to monitor guests during their stay. She did include a floor plan and a list of house rules in her application. Uh, this is an aerial view. She has five years' experience with short-term rentals in the Orange Beach Gulf Shores area. This is, um, at Glen Lakes subdivision. These are views of that property. She's here today if you have any questions for her. And then these are surrounding properties.
This is another one that we're waiting to hear.
To get our.
From our CMPD, okay.
You're gonna set this one for April first, if you set it.
Yep.
In the next section of your agenda.
Right.
That would give us time to accommodate short-term rentals as a part of our place of service.
All right.
Have time to set your rules.
Let's move on then. Thank you. Uh, next section.
All right, uh, next is a site plan architectural review for Chase Wolverton Efficient Power and Light. It's at one oh five Avalon Court in Avalon Center.
Mr. Renee, can we set our hearings? That's the next one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Set our hearings.
Yes, please.
Mr. President, we would need a motion to set items one, two, and three under section five for February fifteenth.
Okay.
I make a motion at those public hearings. My second.
All right, Jay makes a motion to set one, two, and three for February, what, fifteenth?
Yes, sir.
And Sid seconds that motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Motion set the April first meetings.
All right, Jay makes a motion. Set four and five for April first. Do we have a second?
Second.
Brad seconds that motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes to set those for April first.
Man, I wouldn't want to be there that day. Something crazy might happen.
April first.
Okay.
April first, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's right. I got you, but I think we will be here. Um, all right.
So now we'll move on to the site plan architectural review at one oh five Avalon Court. It's in Avalon Center. Uh, Mr. Wolverton purchased the Ride South building in Avalon Center and these three lots. The property is owned C two. This is an aerial view of that property. Um, you can see the location of, he's gonna, um, add six thousand square feet. This is his site plan. He's proposing a six thousand square foot addition to the back of the building for warehouse space. The addition will have a metal exterior. He'll be adding a concrete parking lot for the warehouse and a crushed stone parking area on the very back lot for service truck parking. Uh, he's also gonna install a vegetative screen, uh, to run along the west property line of the lots.
That's backing up to Avalon?
Yeah, well, it is an Avalon Center. Um, it's not gonna be visible. I don't, well, I don't know about to the subdivision. Uh, this is his floor plan. And then these are the elevations.
Jay, I don't think it's visible from Avalon. This is at, you know where the bike shop is? Is that where that is?
Yeah.
I don't think you can see that from Avalon.
Dwayne said you can't.
So can you see any part of the metal building any, anywhere from forty, or?
For Old Fannin? You could, there is a vacant lot there where you might be able to see in there. You know, traffic moves really fast. That's why he's putting the landscaping screen, uh, through there that, to run the length of the property line.
I'm just not crazy about metal. I think, you know, we need brick personally.
Now, he's here today if y'all have questions for him. This is what the building looks like, Ride South.
That is currently what the building looks like.
Correct.
Do you want to ask him any questions, Ted?
Sure.
Morning, Board.
Good morning.
What type of vegetation screen are you intending to do?
Whatever you want, we'll do, uh, something that hides the building or at least, uh, approves or improves the curb appeal from it where it's seen from Old Fannin.
You know, that's probably the busiest road we have in the county. You know, it's not like we're out on Highway twenty-five or anything. Uh, personally, I would like not have to worry about vegetation covered and just go ahead and brick it.
Well, we did do, for your consideration, we're, we're not just putting up a, a metal building, corrugated panel. It's an architectural metal panel. It attempts to match the existing building and make it aesthetically pleasing.
Well, maybe before the public hearing, you can, uh, bring some of that over so we can see it.
Okay, so it.
Rendering.
There isn't a public hearing, um.
Oh, this is it?
Site plan, Jay.
Oh, all right.
What we can do though is you can either approve or suspend any action today to give the staff time to actually review the, the proposed materials. And then give you guys a recommendation and let you have an opportunity to actually see it. You just suspend the actual table.
It's your district, man, so.
It's across the street from yours. If I, if I may, Board, obviously the existing building is aesthetically pleasing. That's why I bought it.
Yeah.
And it is in a busy road and that's why I bought it too.
Right.
Uh, it's my goal not to detract from the existing property, but keep the property value high like it is. It is a warehouse. I run an electrical contracting company that services, you know, commercial buildings and residential homes throughout the state. We specialize in energy efficiency and we're our own distributor, so I need a place to be able to store our materials to do that. Uh, I'm designing the building so that it can be used for other purposes in the future, whether it be retail or, or other, you know, restaurant, whatever it may want to be in the future. But again, it's my goal to make the building aesthetically pleasing and match the existing building. Obviously, bricking the building is an expense that is, you know, fairly high. I would prefer not to brick it, but it is my goal to spend extra money on an architectural panel to make it more aesthetically pleasing.
That's great information. And what I'd like to, I'm, I'm with Jay, I need to put eyeballs on it.
Yeah, I mean, that's architect.
Roofing right there on that, are you saying the sides would be the same?
Yeah, so the sides, the sides of the building aesthetically will look almost identical to the roof of that building. And it'll actually be probably gray in color to match the roof of that building and give it a little contrast to the existing building.
So the sides are gonna be a gray architect metal and then the roof is gonna be the same material?
Well, it's a paravit roof, so you won't see the roof. It's actually raised on three sides. So that's, that's another thing that we've done to make it more visually appealing.
Also, we don't have the drainage information, so if y'all do make it, can, want to approve it or whatever, it needs to be contingent upon, uh, Tim's review of the drainage plan.
We're currently getting soil samples and I've got an engineer and architect working on that, so.
Renee, when's the next planning commission?
The next one is, um, February twenty-ninth.
Twenty-ninth.
Mm-hmm.
But what do y'all think about maybe just, uh, table, table action on this site plan until the twenty-ninth, come back on the twenty-ninth? And if we could have a chance to kind of review the materials, we can act on it on the twenty-ninth. Probably by then, the drainage information will already be in hand and you just approve the site plan period with no contingencies at that point.
Does that work for you?
I don't have an issue with that. I think it'll take at least that long for me to get the drainage anyway. Um, and it'd be my goal to present both at that time, so.
Yeah.
That'd be great.
I think it'd be good, you know, so we can look at the product that you're going to put, you know, sample of it.
I, I will do my best. I haven't secured a piece, but I will do my best to secure one by then.
Or at least a good photo of it.
Sure, yeah, yeah, we can do that.
Yeah.
All right.
So the, the minutes will just reflect, y'all don't need to act on this. Minutes will just reflect that it's table, uh, until the twenty-ninth.
My only concern with that, and you can tell me if I'm in the wrong, would be that if you decide to require brick after seeing the sample, it's being delayed another month for a meeting.
Okay, well, we'll just go ahead and say brick. Another way you can put that in your formula and maybe next time we'll back off of it.
Yeah, you're, you're right. I would rather wait, wait a month and say.
If that'll help you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to our nuisance property hearings.
Good morning, gentlemen. Item one under the nuisance property considerations is the Frank Lovern, uh, nuisance property consideration, one forty-two Duncan Circles, District Three property. We'll open that in the hearing. I'll ask Ms. Renee to demonstrate with the photos. Anyone here representing Mr. Lovern, uh, is welcome to step forward and address the board at this time.
All right, so, uh, we've received complaints on this property, um, several times in the past. The most recent was August the first of this year, of last year. Um, the complaint was that they were running a vehicle repair business. There was rubbish and debris and inoperable vehicles. Uh, these pictures were taken on the first.
So four sixty-eight on the rack.
Sent the right one. Is this, which one is this? Kathy, is this, uh, Lrenda or the other? Are the pictures? This is the pictures, okay. For some reason, I thought it was the Lrendas. So these are the new pictures that were taken on the thirty-first, these.
So the doctor's been removed?
Yes, sir, it was, it's been moved to the back of the property.
I mean, are you working on?
I mean, are you working on vehicles, or are these your personal vehicles?
I don't even live there. Those are not... They're personal vehicles. It's my... My ex-wife is there now, and I own the property, but my ex-wife is there, and that's their personal vehicles.
You're Mr. Frank Loverne?
Yes.
Okay, so you own the property, one forty-two Duncan Circles? All right.
I mean, I know we've had several complaints on... I don't know if your ex-wife or whatever works on vehicles or whatever, or I don't know.
Prior to this and before me leaving there, yes, I've worked on vehicles. I'm a car guy. I've got hot rods. I've got motorcycles. Yeah, I've worked on them, but it's my stuff. I can show you titles and, you know, ownership to everything that you would see there.
Well, I mean...
But this has nothing to do with you.
This right here is, this is all your ex-wife's stuff.
Yeah, right. At this point, like I said, that's the recent pictures at this point.
How long have you been gone?
Possibly three, four months.
Well, I mean, if we have more issues with this property, it's gonna come back on you.
Yes.
And of course, you're gonna have to handle it however you need to handle it with her or addict her or I don't know.
Loverne, do you, do you own the property with your ex-wife?
No, sir. It's just...
Yes, okay. I'm getting into business. What's, what's the arrangement with the ex-wife here?
Well...
Do you have a formal lease agreement?
Lease it.
I mean, I've got two kids together, and then when we split, when we got our divorce and everything was final and everything. In the divorce, she asked for a certain amount of time to stay there.
Okay.
And I agreed to it.
Okay.
That time is up.
Okay.
And she did leave, but supposedly she had nowhere to go, so I told her, go back. And I mean, her, I couldn't care less, but I have two kids together, and, you know, we have fifty-fifty custody for the past eight months. I've had them the whole time, you know, no problem there. I don't care about that. You know, that's okay, but for my kids' sake, you know, they love their mama just as well as they love me.
Yeah, right.
In my eyes, she needs somewhere for them to be able to come see her and, you know, spend time with her.
Well, this child, she doing to have to keep it up or she... Yeah, I mean, 'cause we don't want it to keep...
I mean, I'm not gonna... I will say there is some stuff there, like as far as in the back, it's not, can't be seen. I do have some vehicles there.
Yeah.
But they're, they're in the very back. You can't see them.
Yeah.
I'm not... Nobody's over there working on anything. This has been a long, ongoing situation with certain, certain people, and it's just back to back to back, and...
Well, if you just work with her...
The very first time it came up, I mean, I had Tracos out there. I brought Tracos out there to clean the whole property and everything up. Done stuff that wasn't even my, my place to do because it wasn't even on my property, the property next to it, which I was, it's not mine, but, you know, I was...
Was that the next one we're gonna see?
No, sir.
Okay.
But it was, that was one forty-two, one forty-four, but the other one I have nothing to do with now. It's over with. I mean, I brought a Traco out there on whoever. I mean, that was just junk, like off in the woods. Somebody had like a little lagoon or whatever, and just previously over here before I got there, it's just junk everywhere.
Is that when you had the construction dumpster?
Yes, sir. Like I said, I brought a Traco out there. I dug it, you know, dug all the trash up, everything. I done everything I was asked to do, and that's all I know.
Thank you.
Of course, you're right. I mean, what do you think?
Well, at this point, we, we know that there's an issue, but it doesn't sound like the property owner, in this case, the property owner is causing it, so Frank standing in front of you is, is not causing it. It's, it's a situation where you've got an ex-wife that's allowing vehicles to be stored there.
If we get more calls regarding this address...
Well, what the situation is, I'm gonna say it's, it's a certain person that owns other property surrounding, came to me asking to buy me out. I declined it, and this is when all the problems started, yeah.
Well, I know there's been a lot of mobile homes moved out of that area, 'cause I mean...
I tore some down myself.
Yeah.
I had one that was, it's actually a mobile home that I grew up in years ago. We tore it down because, you know, it was in bad shape. When nobody living in it, honestly, I used it just for storage.
You don't want your kids playing there.
I used it for storage, and, you know, it was an issue, so just I had a Traco out there, tore it down, hauled it off, and it's over with.
All right. What, what problem do we have with this?
Well, I think he's...
To be honest with you, Steve, I'm not sure we have problems specific to this. The problem, I think the biggest problem would be working on vehicles at this location in the nature of like an auto repair.
Being heated out there anymore.
That's what the whole situation they go to trying to cause an issue, but it's not been an issue. It's not been true. It's been proven that it's not true. But yet, they still make the same complaint, same complaint.
I think we just monitor guys. I think we...
We're just gonna monitor, and if we have issues, you'll be the one, because your name's tied up with this problem.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Gentlemen, we'll reflect that no actions taken. The matter's table for thirty days for further consideration, and we'll close that public hearing. Item two under nuisance property considerations is the Lorraine Loverne nuisance property. This is at one forty, one thirty-two Duncan Circles, District Three property. We'll open that public hearing. I'll ask Ms. Loverne to step forward to address the board. Name and address, please. Ms. Renee will demonstrate with the photos.
All right, so a complaint, we got a complaint list of twenty-three about running a vehicle repair business here, rubbish and debris, inoperable vehicles. These pictures were taken August first.
Signed complaint.
Pretty much.
And then these are where the pictures that were taken on the thirty-first.
All right, tell us what's going on.
What's going on is Bill Duncan wants to buy us out. He's trying to give it... He's causing all this commotion. We cleaned up. We did everything that he says, and he's still saying that. We're doing mechanic work out there. My husband and my son do, are car guys. They work on their own stuff out there in their shop. And, I mean, that, that's basically everything.
How much land do y'all own? Damn, the whole, the whole compound?
We're the only two people, me and my, me and, well, it's her and her name. We're the only two people in the subdivision that own our property other than what he owns, and he wants it back.
I own... Mine's almost about an acre, and yours is what?
They're both property, yeah.
Acre, and he, it's been said that he's wanting to sell to a developer, but he can't because we own our property in, in that circle.
Okay.
And he's the one that keeps calling in and complaining, and we just, we want him to leave us alone because we don't cause no problems and nothing.
Yeah.
I mean, and it's got ridiculous.
I mean, if y'all can just keep it nice and neat around there, I mean, I don't think there's much else.
We've certainly done anything and everything we've been asked or told to do pertaining to the situation, you know, to, to, to help it, to show that, you know, we're not doing something, and it's just, it is constant.
If you put a price on it.
We literally told him, if you wanna buy us out, but he don't wanna give us what we want for it.
Yeah, I'll put a price on her and tell him it's in his coat.
And, and that, we did do that, but he did not wanna give us what we wanted. He wants to get it for little or nothing, and we will not give ourselves a later.
Make your price go up.
Mm-hmm.
At this point, we have cleaned everything up. There is some vehicles there, but, you know, everything...
I mean, if you can just keep the stuff behind your fence and just make sure your fence, if, I mean, maintain it and just keep stuff behind where your neighbors won't...
Brad, we can do the same thing here. This would be a thirty-day review, and if there's no additional complaints or whatever, it'll just be reflected that we didn't take action if that, if that's...
We're not, I mean, we're not trying to force y'all out. I mean, it's just, we got to, we got to take...
I own a house and sixty-by-sixty shop down eighteen. You know, if I wanted to work on something now, I got, I got somewhere to work on. I'm not worried about...
Yeah.
Having to go over there to work on anything or nothing, so that's not the case, but yet, they still wanna say that's what's happening. There's a little twenty-five by thirty building in the backyard as far as a shop there. Why would I go for my brand-new, one-year-old sixty-by-sixty shop to go over there and work on something?
Well, thank y'all for working.
Thank you.
Thank y'all, Jay, very much.
All right, the record will reflect that that, that number, item number two, that hearing is closed. Gentlemen, item three is the Charles Canouse nuisance property. This is one twenty-eight Sweet Gun Lane. This will be a District One property. We'll open that public hearing. I'll ask Mr. Canouse or anyone on behalf, on his behalf, to step forward at this time. Ms. Renee will demonstrate with the photos.
All right, so this has really been an ongoing complaint. We received a complaint October twenty-fourth of twenty-three about the condition of the property. These pictures were taken October twenty-fourth. And then these were the new pictures that were taken on the thirty-first.
The house looks like it's destroyed.
The house burned down six years ago, and so it's just an empty lot now. The, the little structure there is, he used to have like a deck, and that's what he calls his welcome center, and so it's like a outdoor type.
Can you state your name in front of...
My name is Jessica Dowdy. I am Charles Canouse's daughter and caregiver now.
I got you. But nobody's living on this property?
No. No, no one's lived there for six years.
Can you give us your address, please, ma'am?
My address is one fifteen Genesis Drive in Florence, Mississippi. That's all four sixty-nine.
How long has this been going on, did you say?
Got quite a folder here. We'll have to look back and see. It's years.
Yeah, he used to get called to these meetings in years past for, since he doesn't live there, for just keeping the property maintained and the grass cut and the weeds cut down.
Twenty-eighteen, looks like the first time when the house was burned. I think part of it was still there and needed to be cleaned up, which he did begin to work on that. He made some progress.
He removed all of the structure.
How long was the tree been down?
Um, it was a major storm that we had, I wanna say sometime last year, maybe a year ago, and... I, I have an invoice where I paid someone three hundred dollars to go out there and cut the grass and all of the weeds, even some of the original landscaping bushes were cut down. It's just this tree I know that is the object of concern.
Actually, I, I think it's the remaining of the structure there. Probably if you get rid of that, I don't know why you would need to maintain anything. It's just a wooded lot at that point. So, but you probably need to get somebody to destroy the rest of that and get rid of it.
How close are the neighbors? I see a house on the hill over there.
Um, that's, um, it's a pretty small lot. I think it's about a half acre lot. And so you can see the neighbors, and even in the neighbor's yard, they have trees down just the same from the same storm, and, you know, their, their trees are still down, too.
I'm with Jay. I think the tree down, and we're gonna have a lot more of them with the drought that we had this summer, they'll start falling. But the, if you can remove that...
Welcome center.
Welcome center. I don't believe they would have.
It's a pretty small structure. It's smaller even than...
I mean, it's not acute. It's not the worst thing we've ever seen, but...
I think, you know, get the tree cleaned up and down and, and the little structure. I actually went by and looked at it, you know, and, like I said, I can see where some improvement has been done. I didn't know this was a neighbor issue, kinda like the previous...
It's a neighbor issue.
What we had one, you know, calling on it. I didn't know. That's why I was, you know, but I actually did drive by there, and like I say, the, and the tree, you know, was cleaned up and, and the structure there. I don't really see any other issues. It looks like y'all have made improvement, but like I say, if it's been an ongoing issue, I mean, obviously, you know, it needs to get, be addressed. But I, I believe, like I say, with the tree being gone and, and the little structure there, I meant, you know, then it would be...
Any other houses close by could be...
There's a lot.
Does the tree need to be completely removed? Because I had someone quote me twenty-five hundred dollars to do that, and just paying for my dad's medications and cater. I...
That's up to you. It's up to you.
What of the tree needs to be removed?
If, what if?
Like what, like the part that's on the ground needs to be removed?
Um, you can talk with the, these guys over here about, all right, fiery eye back here, but I think you could probably burn it and take care of the whole problem at one time. But I would talk with the fire department on that.
Yeah, I don't know if you can burn it. It's a small lot.
I don't know. That's why I said talk with the fire people.
So is that someone else's house in the background?
Yes, there's the house behind, and then a house also. I have pictures as well, but there's two driveways and pretty close on the other side of the driveway. The tree is not too incredibly close to any structures other than the welcome center there.
All right, um, can we do the same thing on this one?
Yes, sir.
Monitor it again and, uh...
What's your suggestion?
Yeah, see it.
Yeah, well, like I said, I agree. I meant the tree takes up most of the lot, and it's right there by the road. You know, I mean, it's, it is that, and that, that structure, you know, needs to be gone. But like I said, I was reading. I was asking her, you know, who was calling in and, and making, you know, I didn't know if it's a neighbor issue or, or, but like I say, definitely it needs to be, the tree cleaned up just for site purposes on the road. You know, because I don't know if y'all familiar with Cleary there, small ten and twelve-foot wide roads run up through there.
It's a corner lot as well.
Right.
Y'all planning on, my family planning on selling this or...
Probably eventually. My dad has showed wanting to sell it.
Well, I would say, you know, clean the tree up and the little structure, and it'd be, be fine.
All right, um...
So what we can do, and I'll, I'll let Sid make call on this, his district, but I would ask for a motion to give us a thirty-day period, table this matter for thirty days, do a review, allow this, this lady to, to meet directly with our community development folks about an action plan, maybe. It seems to me that if we can at least get what's left of that tree on the ground and the debris staged on the lot in such a way you could improve the visibility, I think that's, that's at least, that's one step short of getting all of the tree debris removed. If you just leave it on the lot.
Turn around. There's a guy right there that can maybe help you.
Yeah, I know for Ministry of Men that goes out and helps people and they, you know, I give you his non-problem praise, and a lot of times I get a group of men to come up there and take care of it.
Yeah, pretty awesome.
Yeah.
If they just get the tree down, get it stacked, organized, stacked on the lot, that would say a good deal. How to get the little structure removed is...
They might be helping, yeah. I'd burn whole sucker down. Jessica, your last name?
Canow... Well, Dowdy, Dowdy.
A fellow named Wayne Dowdy.
No relation, but we get asked that a lot.
Okay, I just wanted to know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, gentlemen, we'll, we will, the minutes will reflect that, that we're given a thirty-day period, a delay of thirty days, and allowing office of community development to work and to, to study on this matter and get us with an action plan and come back and report on the twenty-ninth. So that's, we won't need any action on that. We'll close that public hearing. Item four is our fourth and final nuisance property consideration today. This is Lisa Taylor Condia, Jackie Taylor Estate. This is nineteen ninety-five Florence Byram Road. This will be a District One property. This time, we'll open that public hearing. I'll ask Ms. Renee to demonstrate with the photos. I'll ask Ms. Condia or anyone representing the Jackie Taylor Estate to be prepared to come forward.
All right, so this is a property that we've worked multiple times to or attempted to. We've gotten a lot of calls about the condition of the property. These pictures were taken on the eighth of November. The complaints were that the manufactured home was being lived in without power or water, rubbish and debris, and inoperable, inoperable vehicles. It's in an estate, but we finally found a contact for Ms. Condia, and I think she has been corresponding or talking with Kathy.
I talked to her.
Okay. All right, and then these are the new pictures that were taken on the thirty-first. We also got a call from somebody at the sheriff's office about the condition of the property and the no power, no water.
So somebody's living there and there's no power or water?
That's what we've been told, is that somebody's living there. Once before, we had a complaint, and somebody was there at that time.
That's not healthy. That's not healthy.
No, it has.
We agree.
It don't have nothing to do with it.
Yeah, if y'all would just state your name and address.
My name's Lisa Condia. This is my husband, Arthur Condia. This was my.
Where do y'all live?
Fourteen thirty-two Florence Byron Road.
Okay.
Um, this was property that my parents own. The house that I grew up in is beside the trailer. My nephews, one of my nephews, there's three nephews, my older sister, her kids, and she just passed away a week ago.
Sorry.
One, thank you. One of her boys asked if he could move in there at the time that my mother had passed away. And I told him, yeah, as long as you keep up the taxes, I'm okay with you living there. There's no electricity, there's no running water, there's nothing.
We didn't know that.
We didn't. And he decided, well, I'll pay the taxes, I'll move in. That was fine. Had nothing else to do with it. Next thing I know, he's moved in both of his brothers and some friends. Had nothing to do with that. Had no idea what he was doing. Two of the brothers got into a fight on November nineteenth. The one that asked to move in was put in jail and he, as far as I know, is still in jail. The younger brother is living there now. From what I understand, they wouldn't even claim their mother's body. I had to do that. So there's not gonna be anything that they can or will do.
Is this your property?
No, sir. It's tied up in my mother's estate and I've never probated the will or anything like that.
Is there still no power to the property?
No, sir.
We can't.
We can't get this guy out of here.
Right. I definitely.
I don't know how we can evict them, though. How can we?
So we would, we would need to probably move through the chancery process. We've had situations like this before, so for Sid Scott, this will be new, a little bit of new information, but we've had situations in the past. One of the challenges that we have in our nuisance considerations is we really only can work with the owner of the property. That's the, that's the individual who is responsible for the condition of the property. And oftentimes, we'll find situations like this where ownership is actually vested still in somebody who's passed away. So if they're not here, obviously, we can't ask them to come to our hearing and they don't have the ability to take care of the condition of the property. So it's left to the people who are the heirs of that individual. And unless there's a probate proceeding that has been undertaken, there's no, there's no legal way for us to determine that ownership. Who is it? So this kind of lady right here has admitted to you that she's a child of the decedent who owns the property. So she's clearly gonna be one of the heirs of the property, but did she have, did she have a will?
She did, yes, sir.
And so that creates an additional complexity. Sometimes people actually make out their wills and they'll leave their property to somebody other than their heirs at law. Follow that? So we're left in a pickle at the county level. We're left kind of in a pickle trying to figure out who is it that we can look in the eye hole and say, you are responsible for cleaning up the condition of the property? This lady may have some responsibility, but that's yet to be determined. So Jay, when I say that we probably need to consider some sort of chancery proceeding, that's, that's really the only viable way that I can think of that allows for two things to happen. Number one, it, it allows us to do something instead of doing nothing.
Well, can we not condemn it without a court proceeding?
Yeah, so can we? The question becomes, who is the, who is it that has the standing to do the condemnation? A lot of times what that takes, Jay, is we've got to get law enforcement involved where it's clearly established that there's a health, welfare and public safety implication. We have had that in the past.
Right, we have condemned the house before.
Yes, and we've had that in the past. It's, it's fraught with concerns if you have other people who are now living there. We may have minors in this house.
No. Well, I can't believe it. How long has they been living here? How many years?
I don't know, we don't know. See, we told the middle one, which is in jail now, the wife asked, the mother asked if he could stay there. We said, we ain't got nothing to do with it. We don't want to have nothing to do with that place.
My younger sister lived there. She died in twenty-twenty and it was probably a year after that that younger, the middle nephew moved in.
So they have water and power up until, oh.
No, we don't know. I mean, my younger sister, you're talking about drug addictions here. And my younger sister is, she lived there for quite some time before she moved out and.
So you don't think they're paying the garbage bill?
Probably not.
I'll be there.
They're probably not paying anything.
When they come out here for this, when this guy got stabbed, we talked, who was the guy we talked to? We told him.
Eric Mallory.
See, you can get it condemned. We don't have nobody on the property.
Right, right.
Yeah, so here's, Jay, I apologize, but let me just jump in quickly. There is no good answer here. That's the, that's what I'm trying to stress. This is a, this is an issue of the law where the legislature, bless their hearts, they try to do the best they can. But there are gonna be circumstances like this where the law that we have in place is simply not sufficient for us to carry out what needs to happen. What needs to happen is this board needs to be empowered to declare that place a public health, safety hazard. And then have a mechanism to literally go and remove it. And we simply don't have that option available to us, except for the fact that we can go into court and ask a judge to do that.
Okay, let's do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think when they do.
It's, it's time consuming and it's expensive and you have to, you have to make sure that you get good due process served on everybody that is claiming or enters that property, which means I've gotta get title search done. I gotta know who to serve, where they are, how to get them served.
Just condemn it and be done with it. Don't worry about chancery and go have the sheriff's department evict them out of there.
Let me, let me study up on exactly what y'all need to find to do a condemnation like that where you're not going.
I know Stokes can do it.
Sir?
I know Stokes can do it.
Oh, yes. Yeah, I, you know, I don't know. I'm a little more concerned with our friends at State Attorney's Office than some people are. So I want to make sure we tread carefully, okay?
All right.
Let me study up on what exactly our authority is with respect to condemnation. I don't think we have a good file that literally has the documentation about the public safety hazards, right? I need a file that I can walk into court with and say, here's what we're dealing with, Judge, and it not just be me telling him what I think. We gotta have the documents.
With that being said, Eric Mallory that came to the incident on November nineteenth probably has a file because he said that he had to get some people out there in hazmat suits to.
Yeah, he said he wouldn't go in.
He wouldn't even go in.
Right, of course, Mr. Mallory, to his credit, he went farther than he really probably needed to because he's there for a specific purpose. He's investigating a crime, right? Okay, so this is not, as bad as it sounds, letting your house get into this condition right here is not in and of itself a crime, okay? What this board is attempting to do here is to establish that it's a public health hazard. Literally, the public is endangered by that structure. And that's, I don't know that we got a file that is complete enough at this stage. I'll talk to Mr. Mallory and find out. But we've got work to do before we can get to a point where, and people need to understand, if you guys condemn it, the next step is for you guys.
To tear it down.
Authorize the removal of the structure. That's gonna be on the county. The county taxpayers will be responsible for that. Now, we can affect a lien against what's left after it's removed, but the value of this property may not be sufficient to cover the cost of the removal.
See, that's what we thought. Getting the probate will and doing that. We shoot out to a lawyer and he said it wasn't worth it.
It's not. So we may be back into a corner on this one, guys.
We just need to go ahead and declare the nuisance.
You can do that now and that at least moves us forward one step in the process.
But there's nobody to, to go after.
At this point, it's, it's an empty gesture, Brad. I almost prefer that we take no action and let me study up on what the first step to get a, some sort of court ordered condemnation would be, and then we'll go from there.
All right.
Well, I'm glad nuisance, but it's not gonna do any good. You know what I'm saying, of course.
We don't have a, we don't have a person.
Right, I mean, it's definitely meets.
For us to have a jurisdiction over.
But I agree, we need to get something done to get it removed.
Sisters or brothers?
No, no, I'm the last living.
So I guess if you go to probate, the other sibling or the nephews and all will be part of the estate also, right?
That you are.
Potentially, if they're in the will and the will gets probated, then they would be parties to that proceeding, Jay.
Because, you know, just so you understand, if we do all this and get it tore down, there's gonna be a tax bill associated with it.
That's right.
Well, it shouldn't go to us, should it?
It will.
It'll go to the property.
We're not the owner. We don't own it.
But you will be owning it eventually, maybe, I mean, I don't know.
We don't know who's gonna own it.
We don't. I mean, it's in my mother's estate and we have no ownership to the property. I've checked into that.
There won't be a transfer of ownership right now under the law. The heirs at law of Jackie Taylor, the heirs at law of Jackie Taylor are the owners of the property by virtue of the law. That's before the court has blessed who those people are precisely in order, marriage determination. There's a lot of stuff that hasn't happened here. The lien, Jay, would be against the current property owner, which is a lady who's deceased. So our lien would attach to the property. And if the tax bill associated with that is not paid, then that proves it. Tax bill's not paid, it'll go through the land sale. And if it gets bought for land sale, the tax bill buyer will now own it. And they was not complete once they, once they get a title, once they get, they tax deed to them. Of course, when they find out what's going on with the property, they may run and say, just give me my money back, reimburse me.
We have gotten lucky in times, you know, where somebody buys and then we make.
Well, the lady next door wants to buy the property.
She don't want to have some cleaning on it?
I don't know.
Unfortunately, the lady next door doesn't know who to get the deed from. Until this court action, that transaction is fraught with complexities and problems. It's, this is a mess.
But we're gonna try and move forward, get condemned, so we get them out of there.
Sounds good. That's what we tried to do in the first place. And then we need, they say, we know there's five people living there, you know.
They have generators. Do I use a generator or what?
No, we don't know.
The lady next door lives in her old family house. She said the guy comes over sometime, he's broke out with some kind of whips on him. He don't take a bath, he don't do nothing, you know.
Okay, well, I'm sorry. Hopefully we can.
It's a mess, it's a total mess.
It's gonna take time, but hopefully we can make some.
I mean, we'll help any way we can as far as, you know, whatever y'all need. But financially, we're on a fixed income and cannot do that.
You don't wanna get in that. The more you give them, the more they gonna.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you. Do I have a motion recess?
I'll make that motion recess till February twenty-ninth.
Do I have a second? All right, Brad makes a motion, Sid seconds. Any other discussion about recessing? All in favor? Motion passes, we have recessed until February twenty-ninth.
On the planning commission.
On the planning commission. And now we're coming back into public comments. I don't think we have.
All right, let me have everybody just finish. We fixing to move into the February first agenda and I'm not sure if there's anyone here wanting to speak in public comment. Mr. Jack? All right, we'll move on to Tim Parker.
Thank you, sir. The item we have here is the discussion of the CNPD call for projects for federal surface transportation block grant program. Especially for the two new guys, and y'all may be familiar with this, but every two, three, maybe four years, federal money comes down and it is filtered through Central Municipal Planning and Development, Metropolitan Planning Organization, to the county and municipalities and the NPO and for projects. And there's five brackets for the projects, one of which is small municipalities, so that's obviously not you guys. But the other four are payment management, which is actually, we're doing Old Fana Road right now under the payment management section in the last round of funding. Congestion mitigation, which is you have to be increasing the capacity of a road, which is adding lanes to it, building a new road. I think Florence Byron Parkway got some money from this initially several years ago. And then you've got safety improvement projects and bridge repair projects. Unfortunately, and they had to wait until new boards were set to put out the call for projects and the deadline for the call is February the twenty-third. So you gotta move pretty fast on it. We think we can get there, but we, and that's why I have it on work session, not the regular board meeting Monday, we just, we need to get things moving. Under the payment management, we looked at, and those, I'm just gonna call those overlay products for right now because that's pretty much what the county's done under that section. We started looking at the data that CNPD has and under that program, seventy-five percent of the, of the scoring is based on the payment management index rating, which is a rating that CNPD rides all the roads, I think. I don't know if it's every two years or three years, but they ride the roads and they provide, there's a scoring for this. So it's just basically, I mean, then they, then they give us access to it, so we don't have any say in it. But in the essence of time, because we're under a short leash, we just took the ones that had the, looked at the ones that had the highest ratings and tried to figure out which one would be the most likely to qualify. It's all based on the score system. Obviously, we can look at other projects if you guys want to. We just know that certainly at the February fifteenth meeting, we'll have to have a board order setting the amount of match and all that. So we've got to, we've got to close it on it pretty quickly. The two highest scoring, the roads that qualify for this have to be collector or higher. They can't just be a local rural road that's not classified under their system as a collector. The two roads that we came up with were Old Highway forty-nine and that would be in District One between Cleary Road north to where Old Highway forty-nine ties back into Old Highway forty-nine. It's kind of odd right there.
I thought we already overlaid that.
The last time that the county had any involvement in that, that I remember, Jay, was Mike Krippen, if I'm wrong, there was some ARRA money, A-R-R-A. That was back in the Obama administration. I know it was overlaid then under a, under a special program. I don't know that it's been overlaid.
I thought whenever they were doing a lot of work on forty-nine here in the last few years that we had.
Okay, I think that is Old Forty-nine north of there, from where this ties in, north to Highway eighty. That was overlaid under the last state aid project. Not the last one, not the current one, but the last one.
All right. And this is taken from where it stopped?
Well, yeah, this is kind of its own section. It's odd when you, when you, from Cleary Road where Old Forty-nine tees in, when you go north, it tees into itself, for lack of better words, on the north end and then goes north past where our office is, all the way to Highway eighty.
All right.
So that, that project scores high and is about, the eligibility on it would be about one point six million, something like that.
How much of that's in the city?
All of that's in the city. That has been taken care of in the past. It's also on a state aid route. So, and when Mike and I started looking at all these roads, it's also time to start programming state aid. And so this is gonna score high on the state aid system too. And, but there's plenty of other state aid roads that don't necessarily, wouldn't necessarily qualify for this money, but feel like we can use the state aid money. So that's why this fell out there. But it is in the city and potentially, if you went with a match, the city could potentially help you with the match.
That's one point six?
Yes, it would be one point six eligible and, you know, the minimum's gonna be eighty, twenty. And obviously, you score more, the higher you, you know, that's, that's the gamble we always talk about on these projects is where do we go? Because you get, you know, if you match more, you get more points. The other one is Greenfield Road and that's from Highway four sixty-eight, past Patrick Farms to Highway eighteen. It scores real high. That's in District Three. Part of that is. Part of that is obviously in the county. Uh, part of it, there's a little sliver of Pearl, I think, that grabs a little section in there. And then Brandon, uh, has the Highway eighteen in, so, uh, but we would go from, from, from one end to the other. And it's, uh, one point eight.
Where does it score at compared to the other road?
Uh, it scores, well, I, I'm having to do some factoring on their index rating, but, uh, I've got the index rating at about point four eight on it, and the index rating on Old Forty-Nine is point five four. So Old Forty-Nine is higher.
Yeah.
Uh, but, and we can, we can submit both of them. There's nothing wrong with submitting both of them.
What else do we have?
Holly Bush.
That's, sir? Uh, we looked at other roads. We looked at, uh, Fenton, Lennon Circle. Uh, we looked at Midway Road. Uh, they just, neither one of those, their index rating was really, really low. Uh, thinking there, that we may be looking at some state aid potential, uh, there down the road.
What about Holly Bush? I think it's a long road that serves, I mean, it collects from the county line nearly all the way.
The score on it, Steve, I don't remember it. We, we can look at it. I can get, I can let you know on Monday for sure. Uh, it, it didn't, the fact, the factor wasn't that high. The issue we would run into there is when you get, I'm gonna say beyond Crossview, uh, there's gonna be some geometrics that's not gonna, that's not gonna qualify. Uh, because keep in mind, this has, this is gonna, if it's a CNPD project, it's gonna go through the LPA, so we got MDOT. So we got some horizontal and vertical, uh, alignment challenges that, uh, the roads have to meet. Uh, and I, I think once you get past Crossview, uh, you're gonna run into some challenges there. Uh, but we can certainly look at it. We, we're making, we're making do a part of it, but, uh, I can, uh, do my best to have you something by, by Monday.
Just look at it. It seems like there's two areas that always get these funds. And they're not generally on the eastern side of the county.
Right.
So.
It's kinda obvious that we need some more down our way, correct? Is that what you're saying? You know?
That's not how I do it.
Oh, is that how you do it?
Yep, yep.
So, uh, I don't remember what the index rating on it was, uh, but certainly by Monday, we can, uh, we can talk about Grants Ferry and, uh, Holly Bush.
Okay. Uh, we've got a schedule that we need to try to stay on, so if we.
I think we've already blessed that.
I know. We're, we're thirty minutes behind right now.
Right.
Um, so beyond that, I mean, if, if you want to get into some of the other, uh, you know, if, if you had a safety project.
Signalization, is it?
That, and that's what I wanted to talk about. They've changed the scoring dramatically this time for signalization. And it's, but they, because that, that group has always been called safety, but yet it's been mainly just used to install traffic signals around. Uh, and so now they have, and I'm not to read it, because it's all new, they have a safety benefit to cost ratio. And basically what you do is you have to analyze, and we've, we're actually looking at this on one side, uh, to see if, you have to analyze the accidents that are there, and you have to qualify, classify them with fatalities, major injuries, serious injuries, possible injuries, no injuries, and you come up with a cost, uh, a, a, a cost to, uh, safety benefit to cost ratio, which is sixty percent of the score on that. Uh, so, you know, used to, all you had to do was turn in a traffic study and, and look at, uh, look at warrants. Uh, where we were looking at there, Jay, was the, uh, on the spillway road.
Yeah.
At, uh, at, at the ball fields.
Yeah.
Uh, and we've got, uh, I, I talked to Keith about, uh, Mike talked to Keith actually about, uh, trying to gather some information and see how many wrecks were there. Uh, issue with that one is it's a, it's a very confined timeframe when that's, and it is bad when it's bad.
Yeah.
Uh, but, uh, I'm not sure what warrants we would get out of that either, either, but, uh, we can certainly, uh.
I know it never would work, because they, you gotta have the traffic count come from both all angles, not just spillway. And there wasn't ever enough.
Right.
Traffic coming out of the ball fields or out of Shaggy's to qualify, um, so.
And Shaggy's, you know, is, is, is a good bit west of where the, the, so it's, it's a split intersection anyway. Probably in this, if we were to look at it, we just look at, just at the ball field part of it.
Right.
Uh, but, uh, there again, I, I, I don't think, uh, I mean.
It's not gonna work.
For this program, it's square peg in a round hole.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
Yes, sir.
Gentlemen, the first item under my section is, uh, th- this is a redo. This is coming back before you from our prior meeting. Uh, this is on the request from MCH Transportation Company, a Mississauga corporation, uh, that is planning to relocate its logistics and transportation operations from Hines County to Richland, uh, in the industrial area there. And, and the city of Richland has granted MCH Transportation a tax exempt exemption already. Uh, they did that, uh, at their December meeting, I think it was. It may have been a January meeting. I think it may have been a January meeting. Um, this particular request, uh, began life under the prior board, and so the, uh, the Rankin, folks at Rankin First were using the prior board's tax exemption policy in having their, uh, engagements with the corporate representatives and the city and others. And so they were working off of, of what, what we would refer to as our old policy. We currently, we have the old policy until you guys decide to adopt a new one, and I have a proposed new policy to discuss with you on the fifth. It's coming Monday. And so what's before you today is the transportation, uh, this MCH Transportation Company's request. They're making a capital investment in this, uh, in this property, uh, of five million dollars. That's the minimum amount. They expect actually to have to spend more than that, given that the way the pricing of everything has gone up. One of the reasons why, uh, they requested that we go ahead and meet on this today is because I think they are ready to get going, uh, and they don't wanna have to incur any additional increased costs if they can help that. Uh, this company employs somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred and seventy-five individuals. And so a lot of those guys are gonna be, uh, truck drivers. Uh, and so I don't have any information that I can share with you specifics about exactly how their employee base works. Or I, what, do, do they actually locate close to where the transportation facility is or not? I, I, I don't know the, the answer to that. However, they are intending to wholesale relocate their operations, and so there will be some interaction, employee base with Richland and that location.
This is two hundred new jobs on top of the hundred and seventy-five.
I, I honestly, I think that is, this is a carryover from my prior, uh, agenda item for you guys. I don't know that that's accurate.
Well, can we have somebody, a spokesman? Well, I, I met with Rankin First and.
I'm talking about the company itself.
Oh, well, yeah, well, I'm, I did a little, little research. They've got three terminals, one in Hattiesburg, one in Macomb, and one in Island Ranch. And I think when you add all of them up, they have a hundred and seventy-five employees. And I was asking, trying to get some information on some of this, but that's what, you know, information that I kinda gathered and.
They're relocating, or are they building an additional office from Jackson?
Right.
This, this is a new, new facility.
Right.
Brand new facility.
There's no, there's nothing where they're, where they're coming to.
Right. They're moving from Hines County, their place, and they bought a new place in Richland. They're moving from.
So they're gonna build a building.
To build a new building, you know, in Richland, is what they're doing.
Yeah. They anticipate the cost of that new facility to be in excess of five million dollars. That's correct.
I just wasn't in, you know, my personal opinion in favor of it, but like I say, I just.
Um, I'm, I mean, it's, it's your district and.
Uh, the, you know, stuff that I.
I'm following your lead.
Right.
If I may, there's a, there's a change that's before you from the original request that was made at the last board meeting. Um, Sid, myself, Keith, had an opportunity to meet with the officials at Rankin First, and we talked about this situation. And so after that conversation, uh, we decided it would be best for the purposes of this consideration today to make a tweak in the request. And so I want to share that with you before you get to a point of decision, if I may, uh, because it may, it could potentially impact how you decide to, to, uh, review this request. Uh, the prior request was for all of the county's abhorrent to be exempted, all of it, hundred percent. And so, uh, in light of the fact that the proposed tax exemption policy that this board will consider going forward could potentially change, because this, this was under your old policy. My point is this, that request was not out of line, because it's exactly what this board historically has done with tax exemption requests of this type. We've granted a hundred percent of the county's abhorrent, as long as the city had al, has already taken action to exempt all of the city's abhorrent. And as long as those things lined up together, your policy says, as long as they are eligible with jobs, as long as they are eligible with the capital investment that's being made, they are entitled to that exemption. Uh, I, I am going to recommend, and this is after consultation with a couple of you guys, I'm gonna recommend that we look at our policy and that we consider making a change. And from now on, our standing policy will be, as long as they meet that, our capital investment requirement, as long as they bring appropriate jobs, whether it's a new construction or an expansion of the facility, as long as they meet those thresholds, they are entitled to a maximum tax exemption of fifty percent of the county's abhorrent.
I like that, but.
You know?
Go ahead.
Excuse me. Well, we got a new board, new guys. Um. Have a right for us to have a chance to make a policy or not have a policy. And, and, go ahead, Jay. I think that's where Jay's fixing to go.
Yeah. I know I spoke to you about this, and I was trying to come with some type of compromise with the company, but in my opinion, based off of the significant impact this Madison County's about to have on us, you know, I'm ready to change some things. Let's look at doing something different. Obviously, we're not doing what we need to get done, in my opinion. So I, I'm ready to shell the policy we have currently until we can study and come up, uh, with another plan. And until such time we do that, we'll just take it a case-by-case basis.
So what's before you today, in light of that, um, is, what, what is before you is not whether or not you wanna adopt a new policy today.
Right, yeah.
I, I just gave you that information.
Right.
In light of the fact that I am anticipating that we are gonna be making some changes, uh, we went back and, and this current request is as follows. They meet the thresholds, they meet it even on the jobs, because they have committed that they're gonna bring at least twenty-five new jobs to this facility. Okay? That's our minimum number of new jobs.
Okay, but twenty-five new jobs on top of what? That's what I'm getting, that's what, that's why I'm confused. I mean.
Yeah, that's what I'm confused. It says two hundred new jobs.
Ignore that, Brad. Ignore that. That, that is inaccurate information.
All right.
And I, my suspicion, Brad, is that there was an assumption being made that all of their employee base would be relocated to Richland. And as I stand here, I have no idea if that's accurate or not. So this is a misstatement on the basis that there may have been some assumptions being made about how they were gonna relocate employees. And I'm not satisfied that we have the right information on that.
Well, I mean, is, that's my point.
We don't know how many employees are coming.
No, what they committed to though is that if they are in, if they are granting an exemption, they have a responsibility over the next five years to stand up twenty-five new employees. New, new meaning they are new.
Right.
They're not replacements. They're new. It's an expansion of their employee base. So whatever it is that they have, they have a hundred and seventy-five. By five years from now, they have, they gotta have twenty-five new ones, so that's two hundred total.
Across the state of Mississippi, not, right.
Yes.
Not Rankin County, but throughout the, the state.
Does the exemption fit you before they?
Yes, it does, but the five years thereafter may not, and that's the whole point. They've got a requirement to make. They've gotta make that capital investment, okay? We've got to be satisfied that they hit the number, they've got the capital investment in place, or they've got those jobs in place. And the additional five-year exemption, at your discretion, can be granted as long as they hit those markers. So.
At fifty percent.
Yes. And, and so what's excluded under the current request is this, the millage is associated with road and bridge, bridge in Culver, that's nine point oh-two total, and highest community college, which I think is somewhere around six, if I remember correctly. So that's basically fifteen mills. So they're, they're basically getting about fifty to fifty-five percent of the county's abhorrent, when you do the math on it. That's where this request would be. So it's not a hundred percent of the abhorrent. So they're, they're helping to pay for the roads, they're helping to pay for the bridges, and they're helping us with their workforce. That's important.
And, and Rankin First negotiated this relocation based on that old policy?
That's correct. That's based on the old policy. So this is a tweak of the old policy. This is not granting the whole loaf. This is granting a half a loaf.
I'm, uh, I'm waiting. Let Sid make the motion.
Well, I'm, I'm making a motion that we don't give to.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion denied to allow them this, so, uh, next.
Uh, item B under my section is authority for the board president to execute a contract for professional services. This is related to I twenty connector loop project and the great separation segment thereof. And you're also granting authority for the county administrator to do anything that's necessary to carry out the terms of the agreement to pay for those services in accordance, uh, with that agreement, uh, as long as we get proper invoicing, uh, for those services. So this, this matter was before you previously. We wanted some additional information, and, uh, my hope is that that information has been provided. So if we're ready, I just need a motion to authorize item B.
Well, I, I hadn't spoke to Benchmark. Tim texted me yesterday, said he was good to go. I did request, though, a visualization and a map or something. I would still like to see what we have going on. Uh, and so I have a good understanding what it is we're actually voting for here today.
Sir, could you state your name and address?
Hayden Overby.
Yes, okay.
One oh-nine Bay Road, Brandon, Mississippi.
May approach.
So this is kind of an overview mouth of, of the whole I twenty connector loop, as is envisioned currently. Uh, there are two primary elements, uh, that currently have funding, uh, primary element A and primary element B.
Which is that green and red, three little dots.
Uh, so today, the contract is under consideration as primary element A, and that is focused on the great separation. Here is a conceptual, uh, layout of that design. And, uh, so this, these funds are coming from, uh, the FRA Chrissy Grant. I think that's a twenty point two grant that y'all approved the grant agreement back in two, or two months. So.
So hey, what is this here I'm looking at, man?
That, that is the great separation.
What is this?
So that's, so how that's connected in to help the traffic flow, uh, that's just an extension of Greenfield Road.
So is this going away?
No, that is, that's still gonna be there. That's just to help the, the traffic. Uh, you know, because we've got some capacity issues with traffic building up on both sections and being, um, like I said, this is conceptual.
They're coming. This is four lane.
That's, that's correct.
This is conceptual, so this is not what's being designed?
That's, that's what's being designed too, but that's, that's just the visualization.
What is the railroad?
This is right here. And so that's a bridge, and this Greenfield Road will go under here to allow cars to, better accidents. But you will still have the, the existing Greenfield Road.
Well, you'd have to, I guess, because them businesses are right there.
That's right. So it's.
I mean, everybody out of, pay for forms, you gotta get to them.
So what, what is this gonna be up here? How are you gonna do this?
So that's gonna be tied in with a, uh, you, you just, if you're gonna go, if you're gonna come this way, you would just be your home. So that's just gonna be a rail line. It's, it's still gonna be the same Greenfield Road, it's, it's, that's just an additional path for traffic to go.
Nah, I mean, what is the intersection? Where are you, what are you envisioning here? I mean, just, you can't, that's two-way traffic, right? Right here?
Yep.
Right. Well, this is just one lane traffic.
Oh, this is gonna be one-way here?
Right.
Okay.
To just let, give you another option.
I got you. All right. And so what we're talking about today is just the bridge and all the engineering survey and these go on with it.
All right.
Is really help us out on basically, if we've got the flood being, uh, we're wrapping that contract.
All right. So what is section, y'all were talking last time. We got phase one, phase two.
AMB.
Was it all just one now?
Was it all just one now or two, just two?
About segments.
Yeah.
We talked a lot about segments. So there's, there's segment A, which is the grade separation.
Right. Everything else is segment B?
Well, just from here, this is already there, it's just needs to be.
Just this piece right here is B.
Yeah.
Not all this.
No, no. Uh, I don't know about this now. After that, Hayden.
Oh wait, that's already existed.
Well, kinda.
It doesn't have the bridge, and that's what is, the bridge is going to have to go over the interstate, which is not part of the segments yet.
Right now, it's gonna have, I mean, if they were, if this happened, they'd have to do some type of little frontage road in here. Because that's, would cause a bridge to go over.
Really, we could just have a red light right there.
I mean, really, um, a frontage road, right here. Um, and that, I mean, that's something way down the road.
Yeah, all this is way down the road.
Well.
All right. That everybody's clear there, this, this project, connector loop, uh, is much larger than the map y'all are looking at. Just want to be clear about that. There's a lot involved in what we call the connector loop, and it is bound, it's, yeah, but, but what's being highlighted today, what's being discussed today is only a small piece, okay?
Right.
It's a grade separation piece.
So is, uh, has the mayor of Pearl seen this? Because he was kind of set under the idea that this was going to be incorporated with, uh.
Just grade separation.
The whole, the whole project.
He has seen the map.
He has definitely seen this, uh, that, that what you're looking at right here.
Yeah.
Is what we have been hauling around with us for the better part of two-plus years.
You know, it's really sad, I've missed, first time I've ever looked at it.
Well, we actually had the board in here looking at it, and it's sat over there for weeks. So, so it's, we, we had presented, it may have looked different on the board than it does on here, that they're making this conceptual airport connector in one point J. So there's this morphing and changing out of conversations.
Okay.
But.
Don't get me out there.
Jake is very much plugged into what we're doing and has been kept informed about the happenings.
I think he's even going to Washington this March.
We probably had at least four or five conversations with both of the mayors that are heavily involved in this, both Mayor Lee and Mayor Wyndham. Obviously, they have interests that align perfectly on some parts of this, and there are other seg, segments of this project where one or the other of them may not be quite as interested, as you naturally understand.
Right.
We've got a dividing point where the municipalities fall. But, but I think we've achieved pretty good uniform buy-in from both of the municipalities who most, who are most directly affected by this. And the leadership appears to be in favor of all of it to this point, and they, they put their name on the line by executing interlocal agreements.
Yeah, and I know he has, and I, I just hope he has a good understanding that, what he's agreeing to, so, all right.
We'll make sure that, that he does if he has any questions.
Okay. Well, thank y'all for this.
Thank you. I'm making a motion to approve professional services for the grade separation.
All right. Brad makes a motion to approve, uh, the execution of contract for professional services, uh, for grade separation. Do I have a second?
Second.
Scott seconds that motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Motion passes. Next is, uh.
Item C.
Ratifying emergency declaration.
Yes, sir. So gentlemen, we, we touched base with you guys, um, following our extraordinary rain events that we've been having here recently. We had one of our ARPA projects experience some degradation, uh, and so we, we had to take emergency action. We're asking for you to ratify that emergency action that's already been taken and to authorize the payment of expenses necessary and the taking of all actions necessary to correct emergen, that, that emergency situation caused by the storms on the Foster Road ARPA project.
Can I, are we calling the bond or how are we dealing with this?
No, sir. The, uh, the contractor volunteered to walk away. I'm going to let him step in at this point. We've got some additional information, uh, that's not necessarily before you on this particular matter, but we'll go ahead and address it, and if the board wants to go ahead and take action, we can, we can add that.
I guess we can vote on this and fill us in afterwards.
I went out there and looked and, you know, I probably don't Foster Road and my husband does need to, you know, uh, need action, you know.
We've already done the work, haven't we?
Exactly.
Oh, we haven't done the work yet?
A portion.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, it's. We remediated the emergency.
Immediate portions of emergency.
We took care of what had to be taken care of in the house. Is that right, Mike? We did that in the house?
Yes.
Yes, sir. We're still got some old hot air that we had to rest with.
All right. Well, I'm making a motion to ratify our, our dec, emergency declaration.
All right. Jay makes a motion to ratify this emergency declaration. Sid second, set motion. Any other discussion? All in favor? Uh, motion passes.
The contractor has picked up, demobilized and walked, and has done that in exchange for what they were owed up to that point. They agreed to walk away. Our recommendation is that we not allow that contractor to proceed with the project and that we substitute, uh, a contractor who is able to finish the project. Tim has the information for you about what that will result. So this would be, if, if you're willing and you accept the recommendation, you will want to add this item to the agenda or do it on Monday, but we need.
So who was the contractor?
SNS excavation was the contractor.
Where are they located at?
Uh, they're in.
Yeah, it's in the city.
Yeah.
So we definitely going to add them to the list of people that no longer do business with us?
They actually had another project with the county that they are in the process of completing and satisfactorily complete, satisfactorily completed. The issue with Foster Road is it's got, had some really, really big pipes on it, and they're a very small contractor. Husband, wife, and maybe one or two workers, or they could gather up some more labor files. Uh, so small projects, they're, they're okay, and they were doing fine on this one, but this upset rain event comes and they didn't have things buttoned down as best they could, and that's when we had issues with these pipes. Now, i, i, for those that have been down there, I know Sid knows, but, uh, those that hadn't, Foster Road, the ditch was literally right beside the road. And the only thing for probably several years that's been holding the road in place is a bunch of big trees. Uh, well, it's part of this project, so they're going to cut the trees down, establish a shoulder, and, and, and then rock, rock the ditch. Well, the trees are gone, they did, they've done the clearing, and they did a great job with the clearing, but this rain called them, they, they, they left for the holidays and stayed gone, stayed gone for the holidays. Uh, and.
Is that Thanksgiving thing for you?
They did, they, they did work some in there, but definitely not on Christmas. But anyway, uh, so, so you, you've still got what we're considering an emergency situation because you've got a road now that doesn't have those trees there, and you got, uh, uh, you have no shoulder and you got a ditch that's twelve foot deep, and you got a, a serious issue. Uh, Mike's crews came in and, and, and got the pipes fixed, just, and the reason there, that is, I'll get a little bit about Foster, don't want to bore you with a lot of details, but Foster Roads had, had some flooding problems in other areas. Well, in the big rain event, whatever that was, uh, it's flooded on another end, and so this was the access end. Well, when these pipes start failing, now you had, your, your access to Foster from, for an emergency standpoint is, uh, is, is problematic. So that's why Craig started sending out the emails, and, and the, these folks would have fixed it, but in, in days, not hours. Uh, obviously, county crews, y'all have seen them work, uh, it takes them hours to do that kind of thing. And so they got it buttoned up, they got one of the crossings buttoned up that day, uh, the next working day they had, they get the next one, uh, fixed too, so.
What's left to be done now?
So none of the ditch has been rocked. You, you, you've got all that stabilization along the, uh, along the, uh, along the highway, on, along the side of the road there. So, uh, we reached out to the contractor that's working on another project in the area. He also was the contractor on, uh, Mill Creek. So we know they can lay rock, uh, we've seen what they can do.
They seen how much was left in the budget?
Uh, he, he can't, well, he actually bid the job the first time, uh, and he's willing to honor his prices from the first time.
All right.
Uh, it ends up, it's gonna, in, in round figures, a hundred and forty thousand dollars, uh, more to the project. The project initially was well under budget, uh, this will probably push it a little over the budget. We, we had, I say over the budget, the last budget we came up with right before we bid it, way back when we originally started talking about these ARPA projects, there was a good bit more money in, in that project. So, uh, we've had some bridge projects under run. I, I don't think, uh, from an ARPA standpoint, uh, that.
It's not going to be an issue.
It's ain't going to break us. Uh, we, we got the funding in the ARPA program to cover this.
Some of my gravel broke.
I bet you.
But the bid is still good.
Yeah. So what do we need to do to get the other company?
Their original bid.
What do we need to do?
So we have.
We need to add this item to the agenda and authorize, authorize the contention on Southeastern as, uh, as the replacement contractor to finish the ARPA project and to make adjustments to the, to the budget accordingly.
I make a motion.
Second. To add this item.
Okay, uh, Sid makes a motion to add this item to the agenda. Jay seconded it. Uh, any other discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
All right, it's added now, we need to, somebody make a motion.
I make a motion.
To.
Approve.
Approve.
All right, I second.
All right, what are we approving?
Y'all approving the replacement contractor.
Contractor. And, and the amount we're going to pay him. It's, it's the original bid or whatever.
His unit price, he's holding his unit price.
Okay.
And we'll make an adjustment to, to whatever our internal accounting budgeting for this particular project is, and, uh, it'll, it'll be reflected after.
All right.
And we got the SNS, their bill.
Yeah, let's hope, that's not part of this one, I'll, I'll just send you a second.
Sid's made a motion, Jay seconded it, and I think our minute keepers have that now, what we've been, uh, any other discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
All right, motion passed to get a new contractor in there and pay him what he agreed, uh, in, in the first place.
So while I've been in the meeting, we've reached the agreement with, uh, SNS, they've confirmed that they agree with the quantities, which was the work, the work they had done. So, uh, I'll add that to the agenda on Monday, uh, under my section, Smith, I'll get the information to you, and we'll have a final pay request for SNS on Monday.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Gentlemen, the last item under my section is, uh, a discussion about Gunner Road Phase One and Phase Two. There'll be some potential action with this. We stuck this under my section because, uh, up until very, very recently, we weren't sure exactly where this was headed. Otherwise, this would have been under Kim's section. So, uh, we're prepared to, to discuss it, I'm going to ask Tim to come on back.
Might as well just keep standing up here, man.
Yeah.
Craig's loaded, I think. Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to do that, Craig, I appreciate that.
You're gonna have to take a pay cut then.
Oh, shit. Woo, we need to do some, yeah, we need to do some math. Uh, I, I'm, yeah, like Craig said, as of mid yesterday, we didn't know where this was going to be, but, uh, I do have, and to put it in front of you now, a summary change order for Gunner Road Phase One. Uh, it's a net increase to the job of forty-eight thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty-three dollars and twenty-three cents, and adds a hundred and forty-nine days to the contract. I will point out that the summary change order does include liquidated damages, which are assessed, which is, which is in the math for the forty-eight thousand dollar increase, so it's, it's a total increase. So the project went from three million, two-hundred, eight-hundred-and-seven, thirty-seven dollars and eighty-four cents to three million, fifty-one thousand, sixty-one dollars and seven cents. That's the forty-eight thousand.
So just curious, where did y'all end up on the material?
So we ended up, uh, they were able to produce some documentation on some of it that we didn't have, and that's why we weren't paying for it. We weren't really denying that it, some of it wasn't there, we just had no documentation.
Right.
Uh, so we got some of that, uh, and, and, and then they agreed that, you know, I'd mentioned something about the pipes being bedded with six-ten, and we weren't paying for that. We went through each pipe, pipe by pipe, and agreed, this one was not bedded with six-ten, uh, so that's, there's no six-ten deduct there, but these were, so we got to deduct that, so, uh, there was definitely a meeting in the middle there.
All right.
Uh, and, and, and we're satisfied with it and would recommend approval of the summary change order.
And this will wrap it up?
Yes, sir.
Pay you more.
We just didn't have time between yesterday at five o'clock and this morning to get the final pay request, but I'll have it as soon as possible. But, but this sets the final contract amount and the final contract time.
All right.
Uh, so this would, we'd recommend approval of the summary change order.
All right, do I have a motion?
I make a motion.
All right, Sid makes a motion to approve this final change order. I have a second. Scott seconded the motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Motion passes. Thank you, sir.
Anything else I can help you with, Craig, go sit down.
Well, we got Phase Two out here, so do we not need to discuss that? Let's do that Monday.
Hey, let's do it Monday. I think we have somebody, a visitor in the hallway waiting.
All right. Sorry, Sid.
Sid, did you?
Monday, yeah.
Okay.
Monday's going to be too late.
Okay, well, let's do it, man.
So, Phase Two, Gunner Road Phase Two. Uh, back in December, the board voted, uh, to approve the award of the bid of Gunner Road Phase Two to Hemp Hill with one contingency, and that was what just happened, which is the satisfaction of the Phase One final pay. And so with that completion, that contingency, this is really just to get an acknowledgement that the contingency's satisfied and an instruction to Tim to move forward with Gunner Road Phase Two. All right, so that's, that's all I would need, just acknowledge and instruction. So I don't, I don't really need any action, I just want everybody's eyeball to acknowledge the contingency has been satisfied, board's already voted to move forward. So unless there is an objection to moving forward, we're going to move forward with Gunner Road Phase Two. Anybody have any heartburn?
Negative. I don't think.
You might as well not disagree.
I'm good.
Okay.
All right. Well, we wanted to make sure, we, we will proceed and notice that proceed.
All right, we have, just.
Contract documents and then notice proceed.
Clear me up, we have a bid.
Yes, sir.
And we're happy with that bid? Do we need another one? At one time, it was like.
It was just one bid.
We had one bid.
We received two bids, we received two bids, we had one from Hemp Hill and one from Southern Rock.
Okay, but they were way apart.
Yes, sir, they were, they were well apart.
Okay. So what's your work, say, starting Monday, what are you going to be doing?
So now what we would do is we'd just notify Hemp Hill that the contract's been awarded, and we'd send them contract documents to execute.
And they'll start work and have a.
Probably.
When, when will calendar start?
Uh, probably sixty days from now.
And, you know, I, I heard you say that we adjusted their days, and there was a lot of adjustments.
Yeah, so, and I, and I can touch on that, as, as to how that happened. Uh, i- if, if you remember back in August of this year, it was a specific month, it rained about every day in August. Uh, August.
No.
I don't remember that.
It didn't rain since June.
August before, no, no, I'm talking about August before. I'm talking about, yeah, we're in twenty, that price, yeah, no, no, no.
Okay.
Yeah, so we got a, a lot of rain, and August is normally a month where they get a lot of construction days. So, uh, and then it also happened through the winter. And what happened to them is, they, they could document seventy more rain days than the norm.
Okay.
Okay, so that, that gives you, that gives you seventy days right there. So what happens on top of that is, in February, when it rains like that, the rest of that week you can't work, 'cause nothing dries out. So you have to look at the rain days, and then the days that they can't work, or days that they have to work processing dirt. Uh, and so that's where, uh, they sent us, and then that's, that's part of what we were, uh, working with them on, is they had to provide us documentation of their request. And they finally got them to the rain and all the documentation to the hundred and forty-nine days.
I know they are very skilled at this, man, this is what they do. We need to work with them very close throughout this, to where we don't get to the end with this seasoned group.
Right.
And be quibbling over things like we were on the first part.
We have had that conversation, and, uh, Mr. Harrison can vouch for me on this if he needs to, several times, just within the last three days.
Yep.
Uh, and it's been very blunt conversations, but it's been very good conversations. And I think they're receptive to it, and they understand where we wanna be, we understand where they wanna be, and I, I think it'll be.
We don't wanna do this every time we have a contract with them. You know, whenever they are in those arguments, they're paying people they're gonna be paying anyhow. When we're in those arguments, we're paying extra, uh, to be in those arguments.
Yes, sir.
So, I don't, I hope they understand that if this continues, uh, well, it's not gonna continue. We just can't fight with them on every rock that they put in.
I think it's been made clear that it'll be handled, this phase will be handled differently, and they agree, they agree with that, they, they, I mean, we agree and they agree. It's not just one-sided, I'm sure you.
Just as a quick reminder, and this will be helpful for Sid and Scott, both, you, this board has the ability to look at your history with a contractor when you are making your decision whether or not to award a bid. That's why we, we call our bid procedure lowest and best. It's not just the lowest, it's the lowest that is also the best. And sometimes, your history with a contractor strongly suggests that even though they may be the lowest, they may not be the best, okay? So that's a, that's a good reminder for everybody, we work off a lowest and best, sometimes we forget that best is in there.
Do we, do we wanna go into executive, or do we wanna, we've got a couple more things on our agenda? Well, it, it, really, it's if our people are here and ready to present. Okay, let's, let's take, let me get a motion to go into executive to discuss, uh,
Economic Development.
Economic Development. On agricultural property and legal matters.
I'll make that motion.
I second.
Alright.
Scott, second.
Brad makes a motion, Scott seconds, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion going into executive session.
That was for the need, now, I have, uh, same, Scott, uh, Brad makes a motion, Scott seconds, uh, to go into the executive session, and we are in. If we voted for it, everybody, aye.